Good evening. Pastor Dan, would you please give the invocation?
Good evening. Let's pray together. We thank you, Lord, for the wisdom and insight for difficult decisions that are coming here for this great city of Freeport. I thank you, Lord, that you have a great future for Freeport. Lord, I thank you for those who love the city well. I pray for peace and safety on every street, in every home. And I pray that parents take authority in their homes for the good of every child. And I just speak peace within every home. Lord, I pray that we do the right things at the right time as we hear from you. It's in Jesus I pray.
So now we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alderperson's Clem.
Here.
McLanathan.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Brashaw.
Here.
Keister.
Here.
And Berberay.
Here.
And if you could all stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Brashaw.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Brashaw for the approval of the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Item number two-
Mayor, my apologies. Who was the second on that?
I'm sorry, it was Brashaw.
Thank you.
And item number two is the approval of the minutes from the council meeting on April 15th, 2019. Is there a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Busker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Next is public comments. And just so that way everyone is aware, the council has informed us that our ordinance says that there to be no more than six on any issue, whether it's for or against. So what we'll do, since there are more than that on here, we'll just go down the line. And if you care to speak, then we'll go in that direction. And to remind you, if you could please state your name, and then you'll have three minutes. So first on the list is Rich Hoffmaster. Please.
Mayor, city council members, you distinguished guests here, thank you for your service. Madam Clerk, I'm glad to be before you all today. However, I wish I would have been able to had this opportunity to have some discussion with the people making decisions on this prior to tonight. I have a lot to say. I've documented some notes here. I'll try to get everything in in my three minutes. I don't know if I said my name, Rich Hoffmaster, and that I live in Silver Creek Township, about a quarter mile or close to a half a mile south of the furniture store on the corner of the Belt Line and Walnut. I have somewhat of a distinguished property down there. I say that because everybody I say when I tell them where I live, they know my property, they don't know me. And so, I bought that property 20 years ago, 2000. Had a fire in 2002, and thank God for the firemen. They took care of me on that. With a three-minute response time, by the way, even though it was rural that responded. But I bought that property in 2000. My taxes were $1,100 a year. I made improvements to that property. I added to the house. I built the garage. I added a porch in the backyard. I put a pond in in the back, a little koi pond. Raised koi. Don't raise them, I have them. I built a chicken coop several years ago. Spent $4,000. It's the Tasmahol Chicken Coops. My wife wanted chickens. Happy wife, happy life. I get four chickens, four eggs a day. And if you figure that out over 20 years, I'm paying about $44 an egg, something like that. But my wife wanted it. My wife talked me into this year putting up a little fence. We want to raise some small animals. Maybe a miniature donkey, horse, or some goats. Want to get some geese. If I get moved into Freeport Township, into Freeport, I won't be allowed to do that. I checked on, I talked to Mr. Crow Friday, and I found out that I will still be paying Silver Creek Township roads taxes. And after talking to the city assessors, I can tell you that I know for a fact that my taxes will go up approximately $800. I am paying 56 now on a pretty modest property. And I paid them first installment without exception every year. I bank for it. I don't complain about my taxes. I get what I get out of my taxes from these gentlemen and everybody else. I have no complaints about that. I like to watch what my money is being spent on. I want to pay more than I have to. But I'm losing benefits by being annexed into Freeport. My taxes will go up $800, and my property value will go down. Just talk to a realtor. Okay, just give me a second. One of the issues I understand is donut holes. The only properties that are southeast and west of me is the landfill and the county fairgrounds. There is no houses.
Rich, I'm sure that you probably could talk for quite a while, but you've already extinguished your three minutes.
I got, anybody want to give me their three minutes? May I take someone else's three minutes?
Well, I'll leave that to the council.
Well, I have, that's the problem with being noticed like this. I got notified by John Sidecheck Thursday about this happening.
Okay, so she said that if Roger Julius would like to give up his time.
Roger Julius? Would you like to give up your time?
I will give up my time to you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, then I'll start the clock at three minutes, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. Been there 20 years. I love Freeport. I love county. I love this area. A lot of my friends that worked at Kelly Springfield, Micro, they retired. They moved out of this area. I don't want to move out of this area. I worked hard making my property what it is. I want to live in the county. I want to realize the benefits that I have. Everybody here that I've talked to tonight, I haven't found one person that's for this. These all people have businesses, have the same situations that I have. My, I just can't understand. We have a city manager that's been around for a year, that obviously there's been some discussion about this prior to this week. I haven't seen anything on it. I moved here from Madison, Wisconsin in 1968. The sign out there north of town said 28,580 people, within a couple. I understand one of the issues, we're going below 25,000, and that may affect home rule, and that may affect Freeport. I'm sorry. I'm not responsible for that. These people aren't responsible for that. We haven't been able to keep our people. I talked to people all the time. I know people left this area for many reasons, and I don't care to get into that. But we make decisions like this. I won't go into the rest of my list, and I won't take up anybody else's time. But when we go into a decision like this, inform the people, the people with businesses, the people with little farmettes, the people that just enjoy their style of living, that live in a country that run a business. And being out there helps them run a business. Talk to these people, find out how it affects them, and then take action after that. I hope you listen to what I, I ask that you listen to what I say, and I thank you, and I'll yield the rest of my time to the next person. Always wanted to say that, Brad. I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Okay, the next on the list is Brian Hyler. If you could, if you'd care to speak, if you could just state your name, and then you have, we'll have three minutes.
My name is Brian Hyler. I come here on both sides. I am a citizen of Freeport, own a home here, been here over 30 years. I've also got an appliance repair business in Freeport. And then me and my wife, we also own a business in the county, which is in one of the donut holes. As a citizen of Freeport, you know, I feel that all of us that have elected you officials, we have elected you to make the right decisions for Freeport and to make informed decisions. I, in turn, too, got a letter in the mail. Out of the blue, I'm getting annexed, and it's already getting put to a vote. It was already mentioned that we only need five votes, and it's probably going to pass. So my first thought is, why are we even here discussing this if, you know, they're already making mention of that? My here is to talk to everybody and explain to them that what we're doing, we're not welcoming the residents out there and the businesses into Freeport. We're forcing them in here. And what that's going to do is it's going to divide anybody we're bringing in here right now. We need to go out there first, talk to these people. I don't know if everybody even knows all of the businesses that are out there, or the people that are going to be affected, and how they're going to be affected. I think we need to look at that before we just pull them in here, force them in here, and have a bunch of people that are upset with Freeport. I mean, Freeport needs all the help they can get. And I'm willing to be there to help them, but we gotta ask, I mean, just like if we go to get new businesses in Freeport, we go to them and we say, hey, what can we do for you? We want your business to come to our town. You know, can we give you something, you know, anything to bring them to Freeport, because we know they're going to help us. I'm just asking if that's what you need to do for everybody here. Give us a chance. Talk to us. The amount of people that are going to come in for this census isn't what's going to make the big difference. I mean, that's not what it's about. You know, we need to look and, we need to care about what we're doing. And like I said, they were told, you know, Rich, he said, you know, he wasn't put, he didn't put himself in that donut hole. You know, the city of Freeport did. They annexed around him and they put him in that donut hole. When he originally bought his property, he planned on being in the country and living there and enjoying it. Now, Freeport's coming along and taking that away from him. I think Freeport owes him the respect to talk to him and to at least come to an agreement.
Thank you, Brian. Your time is up. Next on the list is Benjamin Hyler, if you'd care to speak.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to have us speak. Grew up here in Freeport, Illinois. Went to Aquin Catholic High School. Went to Highland Community College here in the area. Moved on and went to Illinois State University and got my bachelor's degree. And I stand here before you, and I'm wanting to bring business to Freeport, Illinois. But with this annex, might not be able to bring my business here. So again, kind of lack of transparency, I think, on the part of the city council. I think that should have been brought to the business owners and the property owners' attention, you know, to say, hey, how is this going to affect people in Silver Creek Township in these down, these donut holes? So again, I think, looking at the city of Freeport, you know, we'll see with the census, but young entrepreneurs like myself, I think it's important to, you know, look at these business owners and say, hey, they're going to be opening a business in Freeport. We need to be transparent with them. Because if I'm going to be opening, say, another business down the road, and you guys can do a simple vote and close a business down, I don't know if I'd be opening another business here. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I'm sorry, Benjamin. Next on the list is Dwayne Janiki.
Dwayne Janiki, 2125 South Walnut Road. In a house I lived all my life that my dad built in the country, because he wanted to live in the country. I bought the house from my parents because I want to live in the country. It's not my fault that there's a donut hole. And I don't, I think it's wrong. I think it's just wrong and immoral to say, I can't live in the country, that I have to live in your town. That's not right. That's not fair. The job of government is to make people free, not to say where I can and where I can't live. And if Freeport's population is falling, then, then that's why you people are here, to change that, not to keep the population up by saying, I can't live where I want to live in the county that I want to live in. I've lived in Silver Creek Township all my life, and I enjoy it. And I don't think that it's fair at all to say, I can't live in Silver Creek Township. And some would say, well, it's best for the city, but that's not true. It's not best for the city if the city leaders are forcing people to live where they don't want to live. And that's what you're trying to do. You're trying to force people to live where they don't want to live. You all chose, I'm assuming that all the city council members live inside the city. That's what your choice was. Well, good for you. My choice was not to live in the city. My choice was to live in the country, and that's what I want to do. And it's not right to force me to live someplace that I don't want to live for power and money. If it has something to do with more money to the city, or it has to do with more power to the city, because the city will, can gain residence and keep home rule, that's not right. That's not right, and it's not moral. And I'm asking you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. And last on the list would be Benita, and I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name.
I don't own a business. All I have is my acre and a half. Patrick, you know my, my property. I have approximately an acre and a half, and I have approximately 35 leaf-bearing trees. Now, if I'm annexed into the city, that means no burning. I would like your suggestion as to what I'm going to do with all the leaves that I have. I can't put them out along the highway, I'm sure. So what do I do? I invite any one of you to come out and look at my property and give me an idea what I can do with that. We moved to the country 20 years ago. Before that, my husband and I, who's deceased, lived in the city, several different places. And we finally found a place in the country that we wanted. I've been there 20 years. My neighbor Kay Lamru has been out there since 1964. She doesn't want to move. We have a lot of brush and trees and, you know, just stuff. We don't know what we're going to do with the leaves if we can't burn them. It's not like we're burning all the time. We have probably about three, I have probably about three times that I, I can get most of them, but they're pretty big spots, too. So, like I said, any of you that would like to come out and survey my property and tell me what I can do with them, I would appreciate it. I live out just almost to the electric company, out west of town. So, I'm open for some suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Benita. It, that, yeah, we'll give you a minute.
Give me a minute, okay. I thank you for that, ma'am. Alderman, I'm Roger Julius. I moved into this city 12 years ago. When I see things like this happen, I'm sorry I did. My taxes have gone up every year since I've been here. I do own property out in Silver Creek Township. I'm not affected by your annexation. But the way you're going about this, not letting anybody know, except a letter that you're going to do it, is wrong. You're taking tax dollars away from Silver Creek Township. You're taking away our fire protection dollars. You're taking away our police protection dollars, and it's wrong. I know your object is to get money into the city of Freeport. By taking it, you're not improving the welfare of all those people that are involved. You're hurting them. People have invested a lot of money in some of these businesses, and it's wrong to take them into the city. It's going to cost them more, and it's wrong. I urge you to lay over this thing. Let the people discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. That would, that would conclude. Those that wanted to voice against, there was one that is written as a pro slash con, so Chairman Hadley, if there's something you wanted to say in pro, you are welcome to have three minutes.
Good evening, older women and aldermen and mayor. Reason I came was, is first of all, I want to thank the city manager meeting with our county administrator, myself, this morning. But when this letter was sent out last Wednesday, it caught all our board members off guard, caught me off guard, got a lot of phone calls from our board members. And we need, as a city and county, to work together, better communication. We should have been knowing about this about 30 days ago, so we could have been able to answer questions from the people that are being annexed in. And hopefully, you will work with some of these businesses that are going to be annexed in, so they don't have to close their doors and see if you can grandfather them in. Because a lot of these businesses have spent a lot of money in the county to improve their businesses and everything. So I urged the city council to really look at all these folks that are being annexed in and work with them. We need, in the near future, have better cooperation between the city and county. When we do, everybody wins. The city wins, the county wins. But Mr. Crow did hand something out, so we gave to the county board members. And Freeport Park District is not a coal terminus with the city of Freeport. And some of these numbers that they put out are wrong, because they're including the park district. And I have a map here that was put up by the Stevens County GIS system. The park district is out on their own. So some of these properties that are going to be annexed in will not be paying park district taxes, according to Ron Keener Assessor. He made up this map. So you might want to work some of these numbers over again that you got in this information and stuff. So that's all I got to say, but thank you for letting me speak then.
Thank you, Chairman Hadley. Okay, so that will conclude public comments. And next in, on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is, items are, all acted as one motion, unless there's a member of the council that would like to have something pulled for further discussion. Is there any council members that would like to have something pulled aside? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of approving and placing on file the minutes from the following meetings in 2019. The Planning Commission from March 13th, 14th, and 28th. The Zoning Board of Appeals from January 3rd, March 7th. The Historic Preservation from March 19th. The Foreign Fire Insurance Board from February 14th. The Liquor Commission Meeting from March 14th. The Public Library Board of Trustees from February 13th. The Meeting from the Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grant Program from April 11th. And the PEID from April 15th. And the Greater Freeport Partnership Meeting on April 22nd, along with the Fire Department Incident and Loss Report for March. Also on the consent agenda is the approval of the waiver for permit fees for the Arts Plaza construction permit, as well as approval for, waiver for the property owners for the city to replace the lead service lines. And approval of finance bills payable in total of $694,543.91. The approval of the payroll for pay period ending April 13th, 2019, in the total of $549,872.59, as well as payroll ending in April 27th, 2019, in the total of $626,135.18. Is there a motion made for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Berberay, for the approval of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
Motion is approved eight to zero.
We're just going to do a couple of proclamations. Larry, if you'd like to stand here and face the audience, that would be great. Need to get my cheaters on. We have a proclamation for Electrical Safety Month. Whereas hundreds of people die and thousands are injured every year in the United States as a result of electrically related incidences. And whereas, on the average, there are 440 civilian deaths related to electrical home structure fires each year. And whereas, property damage resulting from home fires caused by electrical failure or malfunction amounts to over $1.3 billion annually. And whereas, following basic electrical safety precautions can help prevent thousands of people from being injured or killed each year. And whereas, citizens are encouraged to inspect their homes and workplaces for possible electrical hazards. And whereas, citizens are encouraged to install, test, and properly maintain an adequate number of smoke alarms. And whereas, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 364 is dedicated to promoting electrical, electrical safety in homes, schools, and workplaces through proper installation, education, awareness, and advocacy. So now therefore, I, Jody Miller, Mayor of the city of Freeport, by the authority vested in me, proclaim May 2019 as Electrical Safety Month and encourage our citizens to observe the importance of establishing and practicing electrical safety habits within their homes, schools, and workplaces to reduce the number of electrically related fires, injuries, and even deaths. So thank you, Larry, for coming. And if you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome.
I'll keep it short. Just want to thank Mayor Miller and the council of Freeport to recognize in May as being Electrical Safety Month. Thank you.
And Fisher, would you like to join me, along with the rest of your group? And Fisher, would you like to join me, along with the rest of your group? Have the following proclamation to read. Whereas May is Mental Health Awareness Month, has been observed as such since nineteen forty-nine with along with being, this is the fortieth year anniversary, I mean, sorry, the seventieth year anniversary. Whereas mental health problems do not discriminate. They know no race, creed, age limit, or economic status. And whereas individuals with mental illness can recover and lead productive lives. And whereas greater public awareness about mental health issues can change the negative attitudes and behaviors towards individuals with mental illness. And whereas approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of fourteen and seventy-five percent by the age of twenty-four. And whereas with early detection and treatment, those individuals with mental illness can recover and lead full productive lives. And whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and the stigma that has far too long been surrounded mental illness and discouraging them from getting the help that they need. And whereas public education and civic activities can encourage mental health awareness and help improve the lives of individuals and families that are affected by mental illness. And whereas the City of Freeport is fortunate to have the Davis Mental Health Group available for such assistance. So now therefore, I, Jody Miller, Mayor of the City of Freeport, by the authority vested in me, declare May as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Freeport. So thank you, Fisher, for attending tonight. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to thank Mayor Miller and the council for accepting May as Mental Awareness Month. Thank you.
I'm Sam Havens. I'm the Vice President of Davis Mental Health Group, along with my wife. She's a treasurer. Katrina Davis lives in San Diego, and she is the President of Davis Mental Health Group. I just want to say thank you for awarding that to us. The green ribbons downtown that we have tied up are the awareness ribbons for the month of May, and thank you for letting us have them up there, too. We're located at eight thirteen South State Avenue. We stay in a building on Saint Mary's Properties. The Diocese of Rockford and Saint Joseph's Saint Mary's have allowed us to be in that building for the past five years. So that's where we have our support groups, and they're all free, and we provide the free support groups and training, and we're going to start giving classes pretty soon, too.
Well, we appreciate all your services. Thank you for coming. Next is item number six, which are appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
Acceptance of reappointment of Kelly Chesney to the Board of Library Trustees effective through May thirty-one, 2022. Acceptance of reappointment of Gwen Crowe to the Board of Library Trustees effective through May thirty-one, 2022. Acceptance of an appointment of Renee Barr to the Board of Library Trustees effective through May thirty-one, 2022. Acceptance of an appointment of Jeff Williams to the Firefighters Pension Fund Board of Trustees effective through April thirtieth, 2022.
Thank you. And if it pleases, the council will do it all in one motion unless someone would like to pull out separately.
I think that's fine.
Mayor? Motion to approve all appointees.
We have a motion made by Alderman Keister. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And the second was made by Alderman Brashaw for the acceptance of all the appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Brashaw?
Aye.
Keister?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
And Busker?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number seven is the Recognition of Service Award. Manager Crowe.
Carl. Is he not here? Oh, there he is. All right. So this is to recognize, Carl, come on over here. Recognizes Carl's twenty-five years of service to the city. Does it seem like twenty-five years? All right. So this is your certificate, and you also get twenty-five Greater Freeport bucks to spend downtown at any of the member, and I know there are several restaurants that are members, so both of those, congratulations. And I'll let Tom, if Tom wants to say any words.
Well, let's see. Congratulations, Carl. Carl is the lead operator over at the Water Frequent Plant. He's been in several parts. He lives around in the water quarter. He first started with construction, which is the central main and most of our current. With us going to the new Water Frequent Plant, it was a three-block, he's certainly not a part, and I look forward to further years of working, you know, for the projects.
Thank you, Carl. Next is item number eight, which is the second reading of ordinance twenty nineteen twenty-six. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
An ordinance amending section eight eighty-nine point zero-one of the City of Freeport Code of Ordinances Regarding Electricity Kilowatt Hours Use Tax.
Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, as we discussed previously in a committee of the whole and then again at the last council meeting in April, this increases our electric tax to, which will be, a portion of that will go to firearm police, correction, will go to fire pensions, and the, then the remainder will go to street work. So this is an increase. This will formally approve this. Once it goes, is approved by council, it will go into effect one July. We will forward the ordinance to ComEd along with the minutes of this meeting.
Questions, council? Seeing no questions, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the passage of ordinance twenty nineteen twenty-six?
Brashaw?
Aye.
Keister?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
No.
Parker?
No.
Busker?
No.
Motion passes six to two.
Thank you. Item number nine is the second reading of ordinance twenty nineteen twenty-seven. Could you please read this?
An ordinance amending section eight ninety point zero-three of the City of Freeport Code of Ordinances Regarding Municipal Gas Use Taxes.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
As discussed earlier, this will be going into the pensions for the majority. We're going to increase it from two to five cents per therm, and then with a portion also going into the roads, forty percent is already going to general fund, portion of it, the two cents is already going to the general fund, that'll remain in the general fund, two cents will be going to the pensions, and then one cent to into road construction. This was discussed at the committee of the whole and at the last first reading in April.
Questions, council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the passage of ordinance twenty nineteen twenty-seven?
Brashaw?
Aye.
Keister?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
No.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
No.
The motion passes six to two.
Thank you. Item number ten is the second reading of ordinance twenty nineteen twenty-eight. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
An ordinance amending section four eighty point eleven, prohibited parking streets of the codified ordinances of the City of Freeport on Ringgold and Park Boulevard.
Thank you. Director Carr?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As was spoken in the last council meeting, this is to increase the parking on the north side and the south side of Park Street around the intersection of Stevenson. This additional length is going to allow for easier accessibility for people to make the lane shift when people back up in the left turn lane queue. The Ringgold Street, no parking, is brought to me by the fire department. The parking that is along the street right there is where the trucks would need to go into access their fire hoses.
Questions, council?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brashaw?
Thank you. Police Chief Barclay, you've looked this over and you've, in full approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the passage of ordinance twenty nineteen twenty-eight?
Brashaw?
Aye.
Keister?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
No.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
No.
The motion passes six to two.
Thank you. Item number eleven is the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen twenty-nine. Could you please read this?
An ordinance annexing territories surrounded or nearly surrounded by the city into the city of Freeport.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we have been revising our comprehensive plan, and it's discussed when we did our strategic plan eighteen months ago, we had talked about annexing the donut holes within the city. This has been, the speed in which this has been increased was because of some information we found out concerning properties registering for the census. What the regulator, the reason we wanted to annex these donut holes so we had similar size type zoning, building codes, and code enforcement within these areas, and building codes and code enforcement were supposed to be enforced within fifteen, within one point five miles of the area and also within this area, but we had talked with the Zoning Board of Appeals at, on another property at the county, and they felt that they were going to continue on with the codes with the county. So this annexation, we found out fifteen April, as discussed with council, that we, in order to count for any properties for the census, and we realized this will not bring us up to the account, that we have to have the ordinance passed by the thirty-first of May, and the properties annexed into the city by the thirty-first of December. Some things that we have to do is there is a payback over the next five years to Freeport Rural. We will be responsible for snow plowing, maintenance of these roads that were, in the areas we're annexing, providing fire and police service, and our fire and police service is a five-minute response time that we have. And additionally, those properties that are in the different townships, the townships will not lose their tax base, as neither will the county in here. Those taxes will remain. There are three, there are three townships that are affected. Those properties will remain in those townships, and they will continue to receive their taxes from that. So, and I've, and that, I verified that with our council. So as we go forward, the notifications were fifteen days prior to adoption, the annex, we had mail out certified mailers, and ten days notification to the town, to both the townships, and then thirty days after the pass of the notice, we have to notify the tax assessor at the county. And I'm standing by for any questions.
Questions, council?
Your Honor.
Alderman Parker?
It's not really questions, it's just a comment from a buddy that talked. I appreciate they coming in, and it's personal to them, and I can switch places if it was me, it'd be very personal. Sounds like they got some very nice areas. We have one place that's a business, and there's no promise or guarantee to keep his business. The communication was terrible, and again, as he explained, it's nobody's fault, but it seems like there's ways, we should have been able to meet with these people, discuss it, the pros and cons and stuff. So for that reason alone, I can't, I can't agree with it tonight. Thank you.
Mayor?
Alderman Keister?
Yes, thank you. I guess after your explanation, I understand a little bit about the expediting this. But the problems I'm having right now is, I mean, there's been talk about annexing these properties since I can remember, and I was born and raised in this town, and it hasn't been done yet. We're doing it now. I know of at least one possible, one business that's in business right now that if we don't make arrangements to grandfather them in or something, they will go out of business. A second one that wants to move in that isn't going to be able to move in unless they're grandfathered in, and a gentleman tonight talking about bringing him in. If we do this, he's not coming in. I think we need to step back a minute and look at this and see the impact, because obviously there's a pretty big impact on this, and address some of those issues. I'm not, I mean, I'm not against the annexation, don't get me wrong, but as it stands right now, with all the questions that are out there and the problems that exist, there's no way I can support this right now. Granted, this is my last full council meeting. After that, you know, I got a partial meeting in two weeks and I'm done. But the fact of the matter is, I don't like the way this is being done. There are a lot of people who are affected by it. Let's address a few of those issues, especially the business issues and stuff, before we push this forward and vote on it. I understand the census thing, but maybe we won't get it done by then. I mean, it'll be done, but let's, let's, let's take a better look at this. I think we need to step back and look.
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
Thank you. A few follow-up questions on, on some of the dynamics of this. So Manager Crowe, you indicated that, well, first of all, what are the statutory requirements in regards to annexation of donut hole areas?
Statutory requirements, and I'm going to ask Attorney Cisnouski to correct me if I'm wrong on these, is we have to notify the residents fifteen days prior to forced annexation, and we have to notify the townships ten days prior, and that has to be done by written notice, and we have to publish it in the paper. We have met all of those. In fact, we exceeded those timelines, timeframes.
Mayor, can I follow up? All right. And you indicated, I heard some comments in regards to this about townships and not wanting to change townships. And it's your representation that this annexation does not change anybody's township. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It does not change the county tax that they're paying.
That's correct.
Okay. When, when we talk about uniformity of regulation and looking, looking at that map in regards to that, how does current regulations and zoning responses, police chief, if he gets called to, or not he, but if his, his officers get called to a certain property, that if anybody, you know, was just looking at a map, would assume it's in the city of Freeport, but it turns out it's not, how does this lack of uniformity impact the city currently?
Well, I'll let the, I'll ask the police chief and the fire chief, Todd and Scott, if you can.
Sure. Go ahead and rephrase that real quick, just.
So any of these donut holes?
Sure.
You know, what's, are you allowed to respond?
Yeah, we, we, we often do respond to those, absolutely for in-progress calls, although many times the dispatcher will tell us it's in the county, but we'll respond to those calls, in-progress calls, anything like that. We often will send one or two cars there. We are not going to not respond because it's maybe in the county. We are going to go and take care of business, and possibly, when the deputies show up, then they'll, they'll maybe, you know, take care of the paperwork, that type of thing, but we often do respond to those donut holes.
So you're already off, you're basically already, your men and women are already performing the work for entities that are not in the city of Freeport.
Well, right. I mean, we, many times, like I said, if it's in-progress call, we, we are going, we are going to go. We are not, not going to respond to anything like that, whether it's a, if it's a fire or whatever, the alarm call or, or domestic or some sort of thing where somebody or some property damage or personal injury is happening, we are going to go to those calls. Now, if we have to secure the scene and wait for the county deputies to show up, then that's what we'll do, but, but typically, we're responding to those as the, anyway.
You have the same question for fire.
Pretty much along the same lines with the police department. When we're dispatched, we go. Have a great working relationship with Freeport Rural, Freeport Rural Ambulance, but when they call nine-one-one and we're dispatched, we'll respond. Through the years, there's been a number of times where we've been dispatched incorrectly, I'll say, or falsely, but nonetheless, when the, when the call comes in, we're there and we're, all those places, we're real close, you know, five minutes inside or more. Again, we're here to serve the people, and we don't get wrapped up in boundaries. Like I said, we have a great relationship with Freeport Rural Ambulance and Fire. We'll sort those things out after the fact.
Sure. Follow up, Mayor? So is it accurate that our current constituents that are inside the city of Freeport through their tax dollars are providing services, are paying for services for entities that aren't currently inside of the city of Freeport?
If our guys respond to this area, and they are, that is being picked up by the taxpayers of the city of Freeport.
Alderman Burberry?
One observation was the comments about the lack of transparency, and I would like to encourage the council and the mayor and city manager to conduct some meetings, to listen to the citizens.
listen to the citizens, those who are in favor and those who are against, between now and two weeks from now. We have two weeks, there should be time to have at least one gathering of people somewhere, either here at city council or at a place very convenient to, to where you now live. Some of the issues that were brought up, I hadn't heard before. I'm fairly new to council, and with that being said, being new to council, tell me what happens, I don't know who to address this to, if this is not approved tonight.
Actually, it can't be approved tonight, it's first reading.
I'm sorry, but if it is, but if we do get the vote on it.
No, it's just a move, you just motion?
Just move it forward.
And second, to move it forward.
And if it doesn't get moved forward?
If it doesn't get moved forward, then we cannot make the timeline required.
What does that do with the potential somewhere down the line for annexation? Does it go away, or?
No, we can still, that would move annexation out further as we go for, forward. I mean, one of the desires that I took from council, and it came out from the strategic plan, was that the members of council here, was there was a desire to make uniformity throughout, throughout, throughout the city. So, if, this is a policy decision from the council, and this is what you have to do as to what you want to do with this.
Madam mayor.
Alderman Buscher.
Yeah, some of the comments brought up here beforehand, you know, there's quite a few people that are going to be having a change in the way they do their daily lives, you know. Got people that can burn, they've got large properties, they can burn now, they can't, it can't, once they annex in, they can't. You know, we got people raising animals that we won't be, that they won't be able to. What are, are there some options to re, look at rezoning for the city, to allow them to keep their way of life after we annex that in, or are they just out of luck and out of that money that they've made improvements on their properties?
So, we would have to go back, again, that's a policy decision from the council. If you want to make a change in the zoning code or the building code, if they, they are going to continue to be zoned at whatever property they are. If that zoning doesn't meet the requirements that you want to do, that you want to hold up with these property owners, then that is a decision from you as the policy body. And just understand that if, whatever we codes, we need to make those uniform throughout the city, because it becomes very difficult to defend whatever codes you have from either building or zoning, if you're not consistent throughout, that's what the, I believe that, I'll ask Roxanne to comment on this.
That's correct. With regard to a burning ordinance, I mean, you could craft a burning ordinance that allows for burning on properties that are in access of certain acreage, you can craft an ordinance that way. With regard to zoning, you know, you could amend your zoning code to allow for a limited number of animals for properties that are of acreage over a certain amount. So, there are ways that you could change your code in order to allow for those things if they're, you know, issues that you want to, that the council would like to address.
Thank you.
Madam mayor. Alderman Braschow.
Thank you. Along that line, Manager Crowe, is there any way to do something like a pre-annexation agreement for a specific business owner and have it grandfathered in, like they did for some other parlors at one time? I'm just curious.
So, the problem, the pre-annexation agreement, that's for voluntary annexation versus?
That's only for voluntary?
That's correct.
And just, you know, Alderman Keister, you were talking about, you know, the whole business aspect. I actually had a few business owners come to me and say, why doesn't this person have to follow by the same codes that I have to? So it kind of goes on both sides. I mean, are we going to pick and choose what codes we enforce? You know, we got to think this whole thing through. So, you know, because a business is on the north side versus the south side, is it fair to them? You know, there is an intergovernmental agreement that, that Manager Crowe alluded to of 1.5 miles, so we aren't currently enforcing that. So, are we going to enforce that with or without the annexation?
If I may, mayor, I appreciate your comment, but what I'm saying is, if we move this forward today, and we vote on it in two weeks, is there enough time to answer all those questions and make sure we're fair to everybody and, or as many people as we can? You're not going to please everybody. But as many people as we can and still be able to vote for it on the twentieth?
Well, I think in the past, we've done a first reading, and we've talked about it in the committee of the whole, and then moved on to the second reading. So, you know, I think there are, there are options that we need to definitely look at.
Alderman Parker.
Responding to the part that Mr. McLanahan brought up about it's the city taxpayers paying the police and fire to go, being able to talk from experience, a cop or a fireman cannot take a minute to decide, is this city or county? That could be somebody's life. We'd look like total asses if we end up, somebody gets killed or dies, because, well, you're not in the city, you got to wait for the rural fire or something. So, I don't think it's an issue with the way they respond. If they get responded, they got to go and take care of the issue.
And they do. I don't think there's ever been one incident where they said, no, it's county, we're not going. Correct, gentlemen?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
And exactly, that's, that's the point. You guys can't, you can't differentiate, you have to respond, I say you guys, because I know your, you know, your past experience. But when we look at uniformity, because we've got all these dots here throughout on it, you know, and because of the way that you respond, because public safety comes first in regards to that, you know, I look back at my constituents and, and say, why, and how do I answer my constituents who say, well, why are you providing services to entities that are inside the city but just are zoned or are not part of the city proper? Why do I have to comply with X regulation but the next door neighbor doesn't? Why can the next door neighbor burn while we can't burn? Why does the county not enforce the one and a half mile road in regards to it? That, that lack of uniformity leads to disparity, and it's disparity that hurts our citizens that elected us by having that disparity out there.
I have a question, Director Carr. Are any of those little spots up there, are they ones that, that you direct your street department to say, don't plow those streets, or, I mean, do they just automatically do those? How does that work?
All of those streets are covered by our plow trucks. If it's inside the city limits, that's, that's something we plow.
Additionally, madam mayor, we have agreements with Silver Creek and Harlem to maintain the roads within the townships right now.
Madam mayor.
Alderman Clem.
There's been a lot of information thrown around tonight, some of it good, some of it bad. Some of it, if we wait six months, it isn't going to make to any difference to anybody, they're going to have the same opinion at the end of it. I'd just like to put up a couple things that, mention a couple things that we've put up with for fourteen years that I've been on the council. Mr. Hyler, while you're sitting there and telling us about your building and everything else, I'd just like to say to you that myself and Randy Corbin painted that during the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Teddy Baker days on the front side, so it'd look better, along with your neighbor's place to the west, that were in the county, that have looked like absolute crap for a hundred, for years. It's time that some of that stuff be cleaned up. You know, the one thing that amazes me as I, as I look at this really is, how did some of these donut holes get where they're at? You know, like your place, there's one place sitting there, or yours on Walnut, you know, that kind of stuff. You know, it's, it's really been some bad decisions before that it just should have been taken care of many, many years ago. I think the one concern, if, if we talk about police and fire, one of the things that Lowell mentioned that I, that I don't think everybody caught was the fact that the city pays for 100% of the fire and the fire protection and the ambulance protection for the first year. The second year, they pay for X amount of it. The third year, they pay for X amount, and the fourth year, they pay for X amount of it. I want to tell you, Silver Town Creek or the small fire departments aren't going to lose money on it. We're going to be paying them, and they're going to be doing nothing for it, because we're going to be the responders. Mr. Julius, I see you shaking your head. Is that correct or not?
Just, just as a point of clarification.
Okay, we, no, we, we shouldn't go into debate, I'm sorry.
Just as a point of clarification, we cannot ask questions from, during public comment. Thank you, sir.
Right, but we will be paying these townships for that amount of time. If somebody says mathematically, we're going to make a million dollars off of this as the city, and annexing this land, what'd you tell me the total is tonight?
So, based upon the figures that were off last year's and the assessments from last year's, the, the city will gain $14,682.33.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, just, just again, point of clarification, only this council can speak during the city council meeting unless it's during public comment. Thank you.
I really think there's, you're right in saying there's a lot of information that needs to be discussed, be discussed, but there are some, there are positives in this along with some of the negatives that everybody thinks they, nobody has said your business has to go out of business, okay? Has anybody told you your business is going to be out of business if you come in the city?
Again, Alderman Clem, Alderman Clem.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
You have to make your comments to the floor, not to members of the audience. Again, I'm sorry, sir, only, only members of the council can raise a point of order. Sir, members of the public can only speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. There's a public, there, there's a public comment portion of the meeting at the beginning of the meeting, and a public comment portion at the end of the meeting.
And you know, I have to admit, I was oblivious that there were so many people that didn't know. Sometimes when you sit in these places, like the council and the manager, and you talk about things for the last eighteen months concerning the comprehensive plan, you kind of lose perspective that someone else doesn't know, so I apologize for that, because we need to do better. So, am I correct on that, Manager Crowe, that this has actually been something that you've been discussing with different committees and such for eighteen months?
That is correct. We've been discussing it as part of the comprehensive plan, and also with council for the last eighteen months.
And, and I'm not sure why county board members didn't know, so I, I know that there are some here tonight, and so I apologize for that as well, but I know that Manager Crowe is a stickler when it comes to following the rules for the ICMA. And so, he views his responsibility to go directly to the county administrator. And for the record, Manager Crowe, have you ever spoken in the past to the county administrator on this subject?
Three times, mayor.
Well, I appreciate that you've done that for three times, even though the rest of the members didn't, were not informed.
The one clarification, I did not specifically tell her when we were going to do it. We had discussions about that this was going to be taking place, and in fact, Director Bukus was present at one of those discussions that we had, that we were going to discuss, that we were moving forward to this. The decision to move this up was based upon the discussions that I, that I, that I had with the Census Bureau, and if we wanted to count it, it is, if it's not the desire to move forward with the council on that and have that, that is not the principal reason for this annexation.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Yes, would it be premature to ask that if this goes to second reading, it'd also be put on the agenda for the committee of the whole next week?
I think that's totally appropriate, council. Is that made into motion?
That'd be put on the committee of the whole, yes.
So, so your motion would be that this moves on for second reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting, in addition to the, the committee of the whole meeting next Monday?
Yep. Now, if I may make one comment.
So, I want to make sure from a point of order, first that motion is put forward, the primary motion cannot vote against.
Then I withdraw my motion.
I make a motion to move it forward to the next council meeting.
Go ahead.
And the reason for that is that the process can move forward, and any time during the period of time after that, it can be moved to any committee or tabled or do whatever needs to be done, but the process will still move forward.
I'll second the motion.
So, just for a point of clarification, just for second reading or for committee of the whole as well?
We just made a motion to, I'll make a second motion to bring it up for discussion during the committee of the whole.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor made by Alderman Clem to move ordinance 201929 onto the second reading for the next scheduled council meeting, along with next Monday night's meeting of committee of the whole. And we have it seconded by Alderman McLanahan.
I'll second it as amended to include a discussion at the committee of the whole next week also.
Madam mayor.
Alderman Clem.
And we also can keep in mind that if it should do anything to hold it past the twentieth, that there could also be a special meeting held that could be, anybody could vote on it at that point.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
If I may, for the benefit of the audience, kind of like what Alderman Clem said, just because we're moving this forward doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be voted on on the twentieth. It can be held over to the next meeting, special meeting, whatever. So, just because it's being moved forward doesn't mean it's a done deal.
That's correct. There's no vote, it's just keeping the discussion going. So unless there's anything else that the council would care to discuss on this, we will move on to the next item. Item number twelve is the first reading of ordinance 201930. Madam clerk, could you please read this?
An ordinance amending Title VI Administration, Chapter 251, Director of Information Technology/GIS Specialist, and amending Title X Employment Provisions, Chapter 290, Compensation and Benefits of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Freeport, to create a new position of Deputy Director of Information Technology.
Thank you, Manager Crowe.
Thank you, madam mayor. So what this does is it, we are, we have a current position open, a data systems analyst position, which is a position that is very narrow in scope in what they can do. We've had a discussion, I will give Chief Barcalo credit, he brought this, this concept forward, endorsed by Director Seven, as we go forward, and worked with Roxanne to create this, the deputy IT director, which will be Kurt's backup as we go forward, will also be a non, will be a non-union position, will allow us to have a position that works, is available to work on police and fire, as well as other city through 24 hours a day at the same on-call, where the data analysis, data systems analysis position was a very restricted position in what they could do. This is a, it will actually cause, result in overall reduction in salary of about $100,000, or, excuse me, I said $100,000, $10,000 in salary. Correct that, $10,000 in salary from what we're paying the data systems analysis to what we're advertising the deputy IT director at.
So, Manager Crowe, this doesn't actually create an additional position, it just broadens the one that is available now with actually less expense?
It changes, it actually adds a position, but we are not moving forward to fill the datum. It does create a new position, but we are not filling the data systems administrator.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
So, along those lines, you're not filling one, you are creating this one, and it's at a cost savings to the city.
That's correct.
Madam mayor.
Alderman Braschow.
I'd like to make a motion to move it forward to our next council meeting.
Second.
Mike or I, whoever you want.
Pick one.
We have a motion on the floor made by Alderman Braschow, seconded by Alderman Keister, to move ordinance 201930 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting, unless there is a member of the council that would like to have further discussion. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number thirteen, which is the first reading of ordinance 201931. Madam clerk, could you please read this?
An ordinance to provide for public transportation in the city of Freeport and throughout Stevenson County fiscal year 2020 for the federal 5311 grant.
Thank you. Director Zupkov.
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, this is the time of year that we're working on our annual 5311 and downstate operating assistance program, program grants for pretzel city area transit. There are three items in front of you this evening that are requirements for those applications. This is the first of those three. This is an annual ordinance to provide public transportation to the city of Freeport, as well as throughout Stevenson County, and be eligible to receive grant funds from state and federal agencies that go towards the operation of pretzel city transportation.
Questions, council?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Braschow.
Thank you. Director Zupkov, is this any different than last year or is it much different?
The only thing different would be the dates. Last year, they would have said twenty nineteen. This year, it's twenty twenty. And that's literally about the only difference.
That's pretty apparent. I would like to make a motion to move this forward for a second reading.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Braschow, seconded by Alderman Busker, to move ordinance twenty nineteen thirty-one onto the next regularly scheduled meeting. Any further discussion, council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number fourteen, which is the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen seventeen. Could you please read this?
A resolution approving a final plat of subdivision for Fields of Freeport subdivision of the city of Freeport.
Thank you. Director Zupkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. You might recall you recently approved the preliminary plat for this Fields of Freeport subdivision located north of Culvers to the west of Cub Foods, where there's already those six multifamily homes up there. This would create twenty-four R six zone lots, and there would be an outlot for water detention from the development. And again, six of the proposed lots have pre-existing multifamily homes on them. Once again, for your consideration, the required sale Sinclair factors for land use are there. And nothing's changed from the preliminary to the final.
Questions, council?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen seventeen made by Alderman McLanahan, seconded by Alderman Busker. Any further questions, council? Seeing none, madam clerk, please take the roll.
Braschow.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number fifteen is the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen eighteen. Could you please read this?
Resolution of the city of Freeport approving and accepting of land bank feasibility study.
Director Zupkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are three resolutions related to this tonight. I'll, I'll give an overview of the process for the first one moving forward. Since September, we as staff have been working with TESCA to planning from out of Chicago on a grant-funded land bank feasibility study to determine the city's viability in joining the Northern Illinois Land Bank, which is administered by Region One Planning Council in Rockford. The study includes analysis of data provided by city staff related to vacant properties, past demolitions, county trustee tax sale data, condonations, and other similar data points. The study concluded there is opportunity for Freeport to join the land bank with or without the pre-disaster mitigation grant funding this year, and the report provides scenarios that include that funding and those that do not. These findings were discussed in a recent meeting with Region One and TESCA as well as staff, where the city was encouraged to move forward with entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the land bank officially affirming our desire to join their organization. Additionally, a part of this process is to be able to nominate a representative to serve on the land bank's Board of Trustees, which would be City Manager Crowe. If that intergovernmental agreement is approved, the existing land bank Board of Trustees would vote to finalize Freeport's membership at their next meeting. And we're asking for approval of the, of the first of these three resolutions to start.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Braschow.
Thank you. And what is the cost of this land bank feasibility study? And is this covered by the grant?
Yes. It was all covered by a grant. It was a fifteen thousand dollar grant. I hope, right now, we've received about eleven or twelve thousand dollars worth of invoices.
Sorry. May, may I follow up? And that will cover the cost in entirety?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Braschow for the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen eighteen. Any further questions, council? Seeing none, madam clerk, please take the roll.
Braschow.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number sixteen is the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen nineteen. Could you please read this?
Resolution of the city of Freeport approving an intergovernmental agreement and bylaws to establish the Northern Illinois Land Bank Authority.
Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As discussed by Director Zupkov, this is an intergovernmental agreement that was, we worked with Region One. We were encouraged, or I should say, not encouraged, told by the state that we must join, want to join the land bank to get any further grant money for demos from the city. And the way that does is that money then comes to the land bank for the purchase of those properties moving forward with the demo of the properties. There are currently three land, this will be, this is the third land bank that's been created in the state. The first one was in Chicago, second one was in the Peoria area. This is the third one. Current members of the land bank are Winnebago County, Boone County, Rockford, Machesney Park, Loves Park, and Belvedere. And with this-
Alderman Parker?
What's that? No, with this, with this approval, they will, they're ready to vote us in for our participation in this.
Alderman Parker.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Braschow, did you have something you wanted to add?
I, I guess it was kind of a dumb question. I was just saying, who, who wrote up all these agreements and bylaws?
So, that, that was actually written by the land bank in conjunction with the state as they move forward. There's a standards, set of parameters that they have to establish. And the land banks are established by state law.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
Thank you. Over the past few years, we've had an aggressive approach in regards to demolitions and we're, and then obviously what happens to the property afterwards. How, looking at these other communities and the land banks, have they been, or have the land banks assisted them in the, the second part of it? I mean, because obviously, we know how to bring them down, but then the transition on back to the tax rules, further continuity of development, et cetera, how these have assisted with that?
It's been very successful in both the Chicago area and the Peoria area to bring them back on the land bank. They've actually, was it in Chicago, they, they've actually established a group of small business owners that come in and either build new homes or refurbish old ones that the land bank has got, taken control of. They have the ability to go into, they're less, land banks are less restrictive and, and that also perfect, protects us from any liability and dealing with that work going forward. The land bank's responsible. They also have the ability to go out and get grants and money from the private sector that we do not have available for ourselves. The state of Illinois, the reason why they're directing us to join the land bank is we've had some problems with the previous in the managing of the grants that we had gotten. In fact, as we briefed in the last council meeting, we received our first reimbursement for the la, from the two thousand seventeen grant going forward. They like what we're doing. In fact, we are used as a basis in a study for a new high-tech look at the land banks because they said we've been one of the most aggressive communities to do it. Really, it's the managing of money which the state is concerned about from us because we're a smaller community and the size of the grants that we're going after is larger than most large communities. And they're really concerned about the management of these grants.
Follow-up, Mayor?
Sure.
So, do you believe we'll have more tools and more options as being a part of the land bank as opposed to just continuing to do it on our own?
Yes, I do.
And does that include both, not just demolition, but also opportunities for rehab before we get to a point of demolition on troubled properties?
So, one of the things under the state rules for land banks is any property that has two years of back taxes or has shown a history of going on and off the tax sales prior to getting the trustees, or to its two years of back taxes and two, and two years of water, outstanding water bills, or it has a history of consistently having two years of back taxes going back on the tax rolls, this land bank can go out and take control of that property. We actually have to wait until the property gets to the state where it cannot be fixed. We have to condemn it, quick claim deed it, or take process of it, and go through the legal courts, through the court system in order to demo those properties. The land bank has the ability to take control of those properties, refurbish them, put them back on the market, or look at other things that we want to do. Like, one of the things that the, we've talked to the land bank about doing is the park district is trying to identify a new area for having a park in Third Ward. And they can gain land for this, purchase that land, go after it, look at the best place to do that. The other thing they can do is, one of the things we're doing, as we go forward for the pre, reapply for the pre-disaster mitigation grant, is they can set up wetlands areas as we are required to do under the FEMA, and they can establish wetlands credits to allow us to continue to use that money to purchase more of the buildings in that area east of the Pecatonica.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, council? There's a motion on the floor made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Busker to adopt the resolution twenty nineteen nineteen. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Braschow.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
That resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Item number seventeen is the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen twenty. Could you please read this?
Resolution of the city of Freeport appointing the city manager to serve as the city's representative on the Board of Trustees of the Northern Illinois Land Bank Authority.
Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This establishes, for those governments that have the city manager, they have appointed those as members of the land banks. For those that do not, they are appointing an elected member. We are making the recommendation that the position of city manager is representative, is the appointed member to the Northern Illinois Land Bank since the council has appointed the city manager as the representative to the Region One Planning Council. That's our recommendation going forward. And we'll have full, every, on a land bank, every member of that land bank has the same vote.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion on the floor made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Parker for the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen twenty. Any further discussion, council? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Braschow.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number eighteen is the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen twenty-one. Please read this.
Resolution of the city of Freeport authorizing and approving an agreement with Fire Recovery USA for billing services related to vehicle accidents, extrications, and fires.
Thank you. Chief Townsend.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This resolution is a contract between the city and Fire Recovery USA Limited Liability Corp. to conduct our billing for the fees that we established back in April, coordinates twenty nineteen dash eleven. Looking for your approval tonight.
Questions, council?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Braschow.
This is the company we spoke with on the council floor. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor made by Alderman Braschow, seconded by Alderman Busker for the approval of the resolution twenty nineteen twenty-one. Any further discussion, council? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Braschow.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
Resolution twenty nineteen twenty-one is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number nineteen is the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen twenty-two. Could you please read this?
Resolution of the city of Freeport authorizing and approving agreements with Crystal Image Cleaning for janitorial services at City Hall and the Police Department Building.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the approval of the contract between us and Crystal Image that you had previously approved on a bid. They are awarded both the cleaning janitorial services both for City Hall and the Police Department, as council approved. Crystal Image was previously cleaning City Hall. They will be taking over the Police Department. So, this is the approval of that formal contract.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Braschow.
Is this the company that put a bid in that the bid was substantially lower than all other bids?
So, the fire, it was the exact same bid for the City Hall, but substantially lower for the Police Department.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor made by Alderman Braschow, seconded by Alderman Busker for the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen twenty-two. Any further discussion, council? Seeing none, madam clerk, please take the roll.
Braschow.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
If I may, before we discuss item twenty, due to some personal information, I would like to talk to Attorney Sizemousky for a moment to see if I should abstain or I can be involved in this.
Okay, item number twenty is the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen twenty-three. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Resolution of the city of Freeport authorizing execution and amendment of federal fifty-three eleven grant agreement.
Director Zupkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the, the second of the routine things. This is a resolution approving the fifty-three eleven grant application. Again, those are the federal dollars used to operate Pretzel City area transit. And again, this application is nearly identical to the one you approved last year.
Discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Braschow to approve resolution twenty nineteen twenty-three. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Braschow.
Aye.
Keister.
Abstain.
Burberry.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
Motion, the motion is approved seven to zero with one abstention. Sorry.
Item number twenty-one is adoption of resolution twenty nineteen twenty-four. Could you please read this?
Resolution of the city of Freeport accepting the special warranty for public transportation funding fiscal year 2020 for the federal fifty-three eleven grant.
Director Zupkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is another requirement of the Pretzel City Transit grant applications. It basically certifies that Pretzel City Transit operates within the guidelines of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and equal employment opportunity rules and regulations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Ross to adopt resolution twenty nineteen twenty-four. Is there any further discussion, council? Seeing none, madam clerk, could you please take the roll?
Braschow.
Aye.
Keister.
Abstain.
Burberry.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
That resolution is adopted seven to zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Item number twenty-two is the approval of repairs to the East Digestor at Hancock Wastewater Treatment Plant. Director Kopanski.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Last autumn, I came before to look to go and get approval to clean two of these tanks that are called digestors. When we cleaned the one last fall, it's found out that there was some piping that has been there since late nineteen thirties. It needed to be replaced. Starting this past Wednesday, we started on the other tank and putting in this request now to do the repair if the repair is necessary. And the quote that I received to do the exact same repair now as compared to last autumn is the same price. If the work will need to be done, we'll do it. If not, I won't spend the money. I ask your approval, council's approval.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Braschow.
Thank you. Is this budgeted?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
And it's within the parameters of what you had budgeted?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
And just for clarification, Director Kopanski, this is for mechanicals bid?
Uh, yes, mechanical.
Any further discussion, council? Any further discussion, council?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
If I recall, you said they'd done previous similar work and you were, the city was satisfied with the work that had been done previously?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Keister for the approval of the repairs by mechanical as stated. Any further discussion, council? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
The motion is approved eight to zero, but I am sorry, I missed the first and the second.
First is Brashaw, second is Keister.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number twenty-three is approval of the bids. Could you please read this?
Approval of bid PW001-19, Woodside Drive Reclamation and Chip Seal with a bid opening on April 30th, 2019.
Director Carr.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. When we were talking about the capital plan, this is one of the roads that kind of came up, as well as when we were talking about the street bond money. We put this up for bid and due to its construction style, we only received one bidder and that is Civil Constructors here in town. Their bid came in at $445,921.74. Staff asked that council approve this bid.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So the one thing I will add to Director Carr is that we, I know there was a question, a couple council members contacted me. We had been contacted by three companies. One was a company out of Wisconsin and then it was Civil and Dunn. And if you look at the bid, Civil and Dunn came together as a single company to do this work. So Dunn is a sub of, so we were anticipating at least two, if not three bids and only received one.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. And council member Clem and I both know how many years this has been discussed, resurfacing Woodside Drive. And it's been a tough situation with our former engineers telling us that it couldn't be done with all the tree shades and leaves falling and the shape of the road. But I did have an at length discussion with Manager Crowe who said, yes, it can be done the way it's being done with the chip seal and with the underlayment being a poured surface. I forgot what you called it.
Concrete stabilization.
A concrete stabilization. That with that and the chip seal, it should hold up with all the leaves falling in that shaded area, is that correct?
Yes, if we were using asphalt, the asphalt would have a real hard time carrying out with all the shade there, but the concrete will cure out just fine.
And the chip and seal, I'm sorry, may I follow up? The chip and seal is substantially less to pave with than with the asphalt too, isn't it, usually?
Yes, the chip seal, all you'll really need is the prime to break or begin to cure out and then the rocks will adhere to the top of that surface. So the rocks will cover it.
And one more follow-up. For our listening audience, how long does that chip seal take to seal down so the little chips aren't flying up on people's nice cars?
That's going to take about a week.
Only a week?
Yep, a good week and then we'll come in and we'll sweep up after it.
So if they call us to yell at us, we say just hold on for a week?
Yeah, and we're going to put plenty of rock signs out and loose gravel, so as long as people adhere to the signs and don't fly down Woodside Drive, they should be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Yes, and you, I think, kind of addressed an issue. That's a very popular road for bikes and that chip seal, when that's first put down for the first couple of weeks, is very, very slick for motorcycles. So hopefully you put plenty of signs up there, make sure that they know it's very slick and maybe even try to warn them from being on there for the first couple of weeks, otherwise we're going to have some bike accidents out there.
Your Honor.
Alderman Parker.
If we approve the bid tonight, what's the timeline of when they'll start and be done?
So Dunn is the subcontractor, they're the one that take care of all the full depth reclamation. I believe Civil is the one that's going to be doing the chip seal, if I remember how they're breaking this stuff out. So Dunn tends, they've done a lot of work in the past for Stevenson County and so when they come in for this project is going to line up for when they come in for Stevenson County. They're at it to cater, so as soon as they can come up, they're going to mobilize up here for, to take care of whatever projects they need for both cities.
So it could be a couple of months or it could be?
I would say it's probably going to be in the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Just to let you know upfront, I will not be supporting this, even though it's in my word, there's no way that I can approve a $450,000 bid with one bidder.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Along those lines, Director, you had referenced that the construction style was maybe why you said that there's only one bid in addition to what Manager Crowe said about the two. Could you expound on that?
Yeah, so full depth reclamation uses a large mill style machine. It's a lot bigger and a lot beefier than what they would use to mill pavement. So some of the local contractors have a asphalt milling machine, but they don't have a milling machine that's going to get 10 inches into the ground. So that kind of machine allows you to reuse the road that's in place instead of paying all the labor it is to remove that and haul back in new rock. So using that machine, it allows us to just till in cement into this 10-inch sub base and then create a, a like concrete structure underneath it, then we could chip seal on top.
Could you describe the bidding process on this project?
Yes, so we put together the bid specs. I had asked Faragam for a couple of things. We didn't have any like real solid in-depth project bid specs that weren't for IDOT. Once we got that completed, we put it out. We put it out on the street for I think two and a half weeks. We received several calls. Civil had called, Dunn had called, Rock Solid Stabilization out of I think Wisconsin had called. They were looking for a local aspect as well and it, I would guess that due to it, they probably didn't find that pairing.
Now, Rock Solid actually contacted me because Monday afternoon and had said that they were going to submit a bid, so we were surprised when they didn't. Rock Solid has been on a couple of county jobs as well as Dunn. They are a new, just got certified by IDOT according to the county engineer when I discussed this with him. And so this would have been one of their first two projects on being in the county. And we were expecting their, theirs and they didn't, but they ended up not turning it in.
Additional follow-up? What are the means by which we publish or put out, broadcast these bids?
So this one we put on our website as well as we put out in the Rockford paper. I didn't assume we were going to get much from the local aspect, so we didn't put it in the Freeport paper, but we went to the Rockford.
One final question. Do you believe there'd be any benefits, potential additional bids, things of that nature if we were to go out and rebid this? Just because I, I mean, I understand the, it always looks strange when you see we only have one, even if it's kind of a combined bid on that. So would there be any benefit to that in your, in your opinion?
So from my talks at some of the conferences I go to, there are only three companies within like hundreds of miles of Northern Illinois that have the equipment to do this in place recycling.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
My only concern is we have nothing to basis on. You don't know how much profit is in here. You haven't said us, the bid should be this or this and it's into this parameters and maybe have put it in there and I missed it. One of our largest contractors around here at 11 o'clock this morning had never heard of this project. So when we say we put it out in the Rockford paper and we put it out, we didn't put it on in the Freeport paper because we wouldn't have that much interest here. I think we still have to take in and put it out there simply because like you mentioned the company from Wisconsin, I have no problem with the teaming job of the two companies. My only question is real simple. How much extra did they add because they thought they were going to be the only bid? And don't tell me they didn't think they were going to be the only bid. I was in the bidding game for 30 years. That's, that's my concern about the bid. Okay, you know, like I said, you know, I'm not going to vote for it because, that's why I said, you know, I just simply think, and that's why I told Lowell this morning, I said, I just want to see how we got where we got. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Director, do you have any comparables for mileage of this type of road or square footage of this type of road that we could have a comparable to?
I don't have the moment right now, but I can get them to you.
May I follow up?
Sure.
How desperate are we to get this passed at this point? I mean, for the project, I mean, is there any way we could lay this over till we get more information?
So if we want to rebid this, what council will be required to do is reject the bid and, and then we would have to go back in and rebid it. So we have a bid, you have a bid in front of you, you either have to accept it or reject it. And reject it, then we go back and then rebid it with the specifications that we, the new specifications, the council, we'll publish it here in the Freeport paper as well as the Rockford paper and put it on our website as we go forward. And we'll see, and we'll additionally contact the firms that bid on it and ask them to rebid on it. We'll have to notify both Civil and Dunn that they, that we rejected and we asked for a rebid.
Follow up?
Yep.
Alderman Brashaw.
And the time delay on that would be, how, I mean, how long do you think that would take?
We would need to have it at least posted for two weeks.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
I'm not saying you shouldn't take it. Remember, I'm the shark guy here along with Mike. Here's the problem that you get on a rebid, okay? Now all the numbers are out there. Everybody knows what the job is, what it should be, what it was going to go for last time, all that kind of stuff. And you could turn around and get a bid $50,000 more. You could turn around and get a bid $100,000 more. So I'm not saying you're not doing it because you shouldn't do it. I'm just saying from 30 years in the estimating business, sorry, I can't say yes, but that doesn't mean you guys shouldn't, just you.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Based on the question that Alderman, Person, Brashaw asked in regards to comparables, you don't have the numbers in front of you, but with the comparables that you had, was this bid in line with the comparables?
Yes.
Is that the exact question? Exact question you sent me was, was the bid at 440,000? And it was 445.
Okay. Well, if it's in line with the comparables, while I have some of the misgivings you did, I'd make a motion to approve the bid if it's in line with the comparables.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion on the floor made by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Brashaw for the approval of the bid. Being awarded to Civil Constructors. Any further discussion, council? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
No.
Berberay.
Aye.
Clem.
No.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross. Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
Motion passes six to two.
Okay, next we'll move on to item number twenty-four, which would be reports from department heads. Finance.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the beginning of a new fiscal year, we're going to be watching our bills that are coming in because some of these bills that we're getting right now are actually for the past fiscal year. So the next financial report I give you in a couple of weeks, those numbers may change before the end of the month, but I'll give you a report as to where we ended the year. Also, today we received requests from our actuaries that they're going to start on our police and fire pension fund reports as well as our Gatsby 75 report over post employment benefits. And our auditors will be here on June 24th to start our audit. That's why for tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Community development.
Thank you, Your Honor. This morning we received notification from the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity that we've been awarded $300,000 in grant funding to be used to acquire and demolish 26 vacant and abandoned properties in the floodway east of the Pecatonica River. Thank you.
Great news, thank you. Public works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since the ribbon has been cut on the Art Plaza, our guys have begun setting up the curb form, forms for Plaza curb there on the north side of the Coons Brothers parking lot. IDOT's archaeological group has contacted us again as they did in the fall about doing some of their investigation work at Crape Park for the Demeter Bridge. They're hoping to do that at the end of this week if the weather permits. If not, it'll be shifted into next week. We've begun our engineering interviews for the Phase Three for the Peck Path project that's going out to bid in June. And then Friday we'll be attending the Freeport High School Job Fair with some summer help.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. On the bridge projects, did they give you an estimate as to a time that you get a response one way or the other on their findings?
I have not heard anything back about the, the living creatures in the creek.
Okay, thank you. Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Yes, Director, can you give me an update on Shawnee Street?
Yeah, so Shawnee with the rain four of the five days last week, our guys was having a real hard time getting out there. So we lost a whole week out there. Looks like we're going to have two days of rain this week, so we're going to lose two more days out there.
Right.
From what I've seen out there, we're getting about a half a block a week. And so if we've got two or three blocks left, we're still talking, you know?
Yeah, we, with weather permitting, correct.
Yeah. And on, on top of that, we haven't gotten word from any of the asphalt companies that they're running the asphalt plant yet. So we can't put anything back on top of the milled service until they at least open.
Okay, and how far are we going to go again?
We're going to go to the intersection right there by the VFW.
VFW, right at 18th.
I'd have to look at a map to know what that street was.
Right at 18th Street? Okay, but at this point right now, with weather permitting, we will continue working. If weather's not permitting, we're not going to work. And now then we're waiting for the asphalt plants to, shall we say, get fired up and And now then we're waiting for the asphalt plants to, uh, shall we say, uh, get fired up and going.
Yes.
Thank you.
And do they usually do that towards the end of May?
A lot of times they do it like the May first, depending on when they have their large contracts going.
We, we got feedback that the cold spell right there at the end of May along with the snow caused them to delay the fire up on that.
The rain's also not helping. Nobody's got asphalt work to do because of all the rain.
Thank you. Fire.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, real quick, uh, we'll be implementing, as you guys know, we've been working with the Red Cross for the last couple of weeks, uh, installing smoke alarms and detectors in low-income areas, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Thanks, Mayor, for your note in, uh, Weekend Paper about, uh, all the volunteers and everything, that we went out, over three hundred smoke detectors. We're implementing another program now too with the Red Cross. Uh, they've been kind enough to keep throwing smoke detectors at us, so we're gonna keep putting them up. Uh, once a month we'll be targeting four streets in Freeport, um, going out and installing those detectors, going door to door, uh, asking people if they need to have this, first if they have them, and second of all, if they would like these newer high, higher quality smoke detectors. And then also we'll be offering a, a quick fire inspection of their home, uh, just to safety. If they're interested, we'll do a walkthrough and point out some obvious things they can do to live safer. Thank you.
Chief, is there any way to know prior to what neighborhoods you're gonna go once a month?
Yeah, yeah, Deputy Chief Sunup will be heading that up and we'll be assigning those. Um, we'll definitely take, uh, you guys can lobby him if you want, as far as if you have a, an address in your ward you'd like to see done, but, uh, Claire's gonna keep track of that, try to keep some organization, and, and hopefully we'll get through quite a few this year.
Good, thank you. Police.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, it's springtime, uh, it's warming up, and just like the morel mushrooms pop up, so do solicitors. Um, and so, um, I, I wanna thank the State Line Area Crime Stoppers, um, they provided these, uh, no solicitors invited, uh, signs. Uh, they work, um, for all the properties, uh, put these by your front doors. These, these signs are to the exact specifications that's laid out in the ordinance. Uh, so, um, Alderman, our neighborhood watch coordinators, will bring in these, will be bringing a stack of these to, uh, all of your meetings. Uh, we have plenty of these at the Freeport Police Department. Pick one up for yourselves, pick one up for your neighbors. And, um, I, I just, uh, I wanna thank the State Line Area Crime Stoppers for providing these, uh, free at cost. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman Brashaw.
Chief, I had a criticism against those signs at my neighborhood watch meeting. The lady said that the Girl Scouts wouldn't come to her house and sell the cookies.
Right, right. The, the Girl Scouts are exempt, uh, from that. They, they should read that newsletter that I wrote, uh, recently, yeah.
And as a follow-up, I, I did tell them that they could put a little notation at the bottom that said, except for Girl Scouts.
Everybody knows that you buy Girl Scout cookies at work, right? I mean, that's, uh, usually where I get hit up at, uh, at work, so.
A lot of my seniors don't.
Thank you. Water and sewer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Like to go and update, uh, the Float Street, Water Main, uh, Sewer, Main Project. Since last meeting of a few weeks ago, we were planning to go and start, uh, fifteenth of April. That did not happen. They finally put the first bucket in the ground this past Friday, so the project has started. And I look to go and provide updates that it's, uh, moving along.
Thank you. IT. And library.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank you for, um, appointing and filling up. We only have one more seat left on our board, so thank you for doing that. And secondly, our, uh, Gallery Cafe opened last Wednesday, and it's been great. Um, you're all invited to our ribbon cutting ceremony on Thursday, May ninth, at twelve PM. If you can make it, that'd be great. It should be short and sweet, 'cause that's how we do things at the library. Have a good night.
Thank you. I don't have a problem. Do you have a problem? That concludes the department head reports, so, uh, city manager report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, wanted to let you know, I don't know if it's passed the House as of yet, but we are expecting, uh, sometime within the next, uh, week legalized marijuana to pass within the state of Illinois. Uh, we will be looking at, uh, the ordinances. I've already been in contact with both, with all the attorneys, uh, as we're going forward, how we have to do it. One of the keys is that, uh, the cities do not have to allow the sale of marijuana within their, um, boundaries. They can establish that. That's one portion of, um, the, uh, the ordinance. But we'll have to also establish some type of licensing as we go forward. Um, but we'll see more as the bill goes forward. Uh, we believe it'll come out of the House. It's the Senate that the, uh, Governor is, uh, working to get his votes in line. Um, the other thing, uh, as, while we're speaking, uh, and things that are green, I wanna talk about grass and grass cutting. The season, um, is there to cut grass. I know I cut grass for my first time, uh, this last weekend. Uh, just a reminder, do not put your grass clippings, uh, in the street. Uh, this causes issues with our storm sewer. Uh, and we, uh, I know the council passed the additional money to start working storm sewer, but we don't wanna spend, spend it by, uh, having to dig out the grass out of the storm sewer. We wanna spend it actually fixing many of the storm sewer problems and, uh, storm water problems we have. Uh, and that's all I've got. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, this coming Wednesday, the eighth, uh, City Manager Crowe and I are having city conversations at Higher Grounds at eight AM. This is the opportunity for citizens to come and talk to us about their ideas, their thoughts, their questions, their solutions, anything they'd like to share with us. We'll be there from eight to nine, so please avail yourself to that, if, should you so desire. And then to go along with, um, Director Huffine's comments concerning the Gallery Cafe, that's this Thursday at noon. And then also the following Tuesday, which is the fourteenth at noon, there will be a ribbon cutting for nine east for the new owners there. So if you have room on your calendar you'd like to attend, we would love to have you there. And then also that following Wednesday at ten AM, we are having a swearing in for an additional officer. And so if, um, anyone would like to come for that, we, you are more than welcome to join us here. We hold it here in the council chambers, and that is at ten AM. So ten AM on the fifteenth. And that's all I have. Uh, Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I noticed in my ward we not only have a litter problem, but we have people that are starting to put their leaves back out into the street, and it is spring. We do not have leaf pickup in the spring in Freeport. Um, I don't wanna call a nuisance, but, uh, on Stevenson and Lincoln, we need to get those leaves cleaned up, and I hope people start picking up the trash too. I filled an entire garbage bag going up and down the streets yesterday, and, uh, it's a little disconcerting when, I know, uh, it's not always from garbage day, it's from people just throwing things out their windows, or children throwing trash, or maybe adults throwing trash. But, uh, we need to clean up our society here in Freeport, and everyone needs to do their share and pick up. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Keister.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, too. Real, a couple of real quick things. Number one, remember, weather's getting nice, the bikes are out. Uh, anytime it's not raining and the weather's nice, they're gonna be outnumbered. So look twice, if not three times for them. The life you save may be mine. Number two, Manager Crowe, I like your comment on not blowing grass in the, in the street. However, remember too, not only does it damage the sewers, any two-wheeled vehicle that goes over top that grass, that grass is very slick, and you could bring a motorcycle down just by putting your grass in the street. So please remember that. And the final thing is, the weather's starting to get warm. If you take pets with you shopping or anywhere, if it's too hot in the car for you, it's too hot and, hot in the car for them. Don't bring them.
Thank you. Alderman Burberry.
Thank you. On behalf of, uh, newly-elected Alderman Persons Eric Borneman and Dan Mysick and, and myself, I'd like to thank the city department heads, um, the mayor, the clerk, uh, city manager, um, our attorney, uh, for a tremendous day and a half of orientation, all day Friday and half of Saturday when the weather was beautiful. We were in meetings, but we did get to see almost every facility the city owns and uses, and it was very, very educational. So I thank you all.
Thank you. Alderman Clem.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman McLanathan.
Nothing further, thank you.
And Alderman Ross.
Yes, uh, we're gonna have, uh, our first neighborhood watch meeting coming up this, uh, the sixteenth of this month at the VFW at six PM. Uh, I'm gonna make sure that we, uh, hand out some flyers to the, uh, shall we say, the regular residents in the arcade that were coming, uh, to the meetings, and then we'll, let's see if we can get it to grow from there. Uh, that's about it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Parker.
Nothing, Your Honor.
And Alderman Busker.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. That leaves us with item number twenty-eight, which is public comments. Are there any public comments? And if you could again state your name, and then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rich Hoffmaster, once again Silver Creek, out on Madison Road. I'd like to thank the council and make an observation of what I saw tonight. I saw a lot of elected council members that are very sincere in representing their districts, their people. They were elected to that position. And I seen some concern from those council members of what I and other members have had to say about what's going on. And I think that, uh, Councilwoman Brashaw has a great idea in meeting, setting up a meeting with us personally. I will personally make a contact or try to make a contact with each one of you. But obviously it'd be a lot easier if we could have a group setting, and everyone here would be invited, and I would be invited, because I did hear some things that I find highly questionable, uh, of some things that happen between the county and city. Not that there isn't coordination between all the departments, 'cause there is. And these people aren't gonna respond to something out of the city if they know something's going on. I know these type of people. They will do what it takes to protect people. Likewise, rural's the same way. But there were some things mentioned that I would like to bring to your attention, of observations that I have had personally, uh, out where I live. So I thank you for considering that, and I would really ask that you talk to us. I, my, my issue with tonight is I didn't hear anything, if anything, enough to, uh, make me accept the fact that you wanna pull me out of the county, 'cause I am at least a half a mile from any residents of the city. Now, I got the dump, but the transfer station and the fairgrounds, but there's no residents around Dwayne and I. We are a half a mile from town. And I hear, I heard nothing that makes me feel comfortable about forcing me into that situation of the city that's gonna benefit the city. Now, maybe y'all know more than I do, obviously you do, about finances and that, but I didn't hear it tonight. I heard a city manager tell to this group that he can legally do what he wants to do. And if we all just looked at what we could legally do and not the consequences that come from doing that without getting involvement from the people, what kinda stuff are you gonna get done? So I thank you. I mean, I take this, you can tell. I don't come, I'm, I'm not a member of the city. I couldn't come to the city member, council. I had no reason before. But you can tell the compassion that I and these citizens of the county right now have. It does affect us. And if you're gonna force us into this situation, then please tell us how this is gonna benefit the city. I got no problem with the city of Freeport. I moved here in nineteen sixty-eight. I got, I went to school at Freeport High. I got no problems with it at all. I'm watching the clock too. I got no problem with the city of Freeport. I like my circumstances, the way they are. I spent money developing my property. I bought out there for that reason. And I just ask you to leave us, leave me where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Is there anyone else?
Corey Wheat, Harlem Township Road Commissioner. You just got a lot of, you're pulling the trigger pretty fast on this without a, got a lot more, uh, questions. And there, uh, the only one I heard is, his building looks horrible, and the fire department is, the city's paying double or whatever. Where if you drove out to town, who's paying for that? You know, when you hit the, uh, rural, you know, the rural residents are paying for that. So it's kind of a flip-flop. That's why it's mutual aid. Uh, and I think they worked that out really well. But, yeah, I'd like, uh, you know, with the roads and stuff, you're taking over any roads? I mean, that piece of paper, I got that a couple of days ago, wasn't home, and then, uh, went down to the post office and got it, and really don't have a clue what's, uh, really taking on here. So, uh, ah, I would just say, even with the road stuff you guys are talking about, you know, are you coring the roads out? Is there a base? Is there tubes? Just way too many, uh, questions, not answers for approving stuff, just like that, so. Just had to say that, and thank you.
Corey, what township did you say you are?
Harlem Township.
Thank you.
Not really affected too bad by this, but I mean, you affect the taxpayers, so you still gotta pay half the road and bridge tax forever, and then you gotta pay the city tax, is what I do believe happens. Not a hundred percent, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Dolores McKenzie. Um, my husband and I live at twenty-two ninety-five West Calina Avenue. We have been there for thirty years. I don't see how this is going to be a benefit to everyone in this room. Um, for you, for the council members here to have been discussing this for eighteen months, and we just get a notification last week, and then now you wanna vote on it on May twentieth, to me is unacceptable. I don't see the reasoning behind it. I don't see how it's gonna benefit anybody here that wasn't discussed in this letter. Other than the census, what, what is it gonna do for us? We can burn in the county. I, I just don't see the reasoning behind it, and I would really appreciate it if this council would let us have another meeting to discuss this, this issue. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Steve Heitz, and I live at One West Factory. I own property in Silver Creek. It's Three West Factory. Actually, it's kind of unique. My house is in the city right now. It's my backyard, basically. And I've lived there for off and on, my family, fifty-six years. And we've raised animals there for the whole time. People might laugh here when I say this, but actually I did ride in there when I was four years old in a pony cart pulled by a pony from Pearl City. So I don't think it's right. Just five years ago, they gave me a permit to build a big building to store feed, hay, equipment in. And now I get sucked in the city. I can't have my animals, or raise animals. What good are all the buildings, I mean, on my property? They're worthless. I mean, paying taxes on the buildings, I should be able to use the buildings. And that's all I have to say. I just, I just don't think it's right either, like, that, you know, somebody lives their whole life somewhere and owns property their whole life somewhere, and all of a sudden you just take your whole retirement and everything right out from under you. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else?
Dwayne Janicky, and I'm still against annexation. And, um, when I signed in, the, the whole list there, you know, at the end it says pros and cons, I didn't see anybody write pro. Everybody that came was, was against it. There, there must be a reason that these peo, that we don't want to be in the city. Uh, and, um, and like Rich said, and I think Alderman Clem mentioned our property, there's, there's no houses within a half a mile of us. It, it's not like, you, there's, the guy across the street can do this, and the guy across the street can't do that. There's, there's no other houses. We, we don't, we don't, we're, we're not around anybody else. So I just don't think that it, that it's, still don't think that it's right, and, uh, I hope that, uh, and, and I saw, when I was talking before, I, I saw eyes that had compassion in them. Uh, I saw some eyes that said, I don't, I couldn't care less what you said. And, and, and that's not good, when you don't care about the people that you're affecting most. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. And just for the record, we have room for one more, so, because six is the ordinance number, so whoever, um, and, um, just to be considerate of others, Mr. Hyler, would there be someone that hasn't been able to speak that would, might want that spot?
I'm gonna try and take thirty seconds, um, a couple of quick things. One response I wanna do, uh, Tom, Clem. Uh, you said, nobody told me that I would have to close. Uh, that was done when they sent me the letter and said, we're gonna annex you, because then that means I have to be considered, uh, with the city, uh, rules. Um, says the city can enforce the laws within one and a half miles if needed. There is no ordinance saying that we have to obey by those rules. It's that the city can enforce those rules if we, if need be. That would be if I would decide that I wanted to burn and let my smoke roll into Freeport, I would expect you to come talk to me. Now, if my neighbor has a fire pit and cleans up his yard and throw his leaves in there and burns, and I can't open my windows, then I have to call somebody. And I hear that a lot around Freeport.
Madam Mayor, it's good to see you. My name's Keith Martin. My wife Diane live on West Calina. My, my comment is three things. One, I think we've been pretty good citizens, and I, two, I think we've been pretty good neighbors. Uh, all except for that time the DJ turned it up at my son's wedding reception, but that was Guns N' Roses. I'm apologizing. My neighbors were okay. Um, I think that if, this would feel better if we had some sort of open discussion. We have concerns simply from a fire protection standpoint. There's nobody better than this man to my left that I would want taking care of my family. We don't have access to hydrants. I pay a fifteen percent premium on my homeowner's insurance for two and a half million dollars worth of my property, because I don't have those services available. If you bring those in, I, I'd have no problem talking to you about annexation. I think it, every property owner has their own unique situation, and the only thing I'm asking is that there is the opportunity to have a discussion about what those issues are. I don't think anybody here is gonna be throwing rocks and, and bottles. The irony here is, when we moved here, we asked to annex. And we went through a long process with the city, and they would not provide the services for us to hook up to water and sewer. They asked us to spend the forty grand to do that. So there is a little bit of a personal issue that I have with this issue of being forced to pay for services that I can't have, because God forbid, if anybody on that frontage rows has, has a loss, and it's because we don't have access to fire protection through a hydrant, which is by code in your city, that would be a problem. That, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. And anyone else that is not related to, yes, Tommy?
I wanna go, Todd Bago. He, he did a good job that put...
I wanna go, Todd Bago. He did a good job at the prestation. And I wanna know, what you gonna do with the Sweet Home Wonderway at the- And I wanna tell Joey Miller, my birthday's coming up next month, and I wanna tell you it's June second, and that I'm gonna be fifty-six, you know?
All right. Thank you, Tommy. I made note.
And I wanna tell you, you guys are doing a good job at the city. I don't care what they say to you, but you do a good job anyway.
Thank you, Tommy.
And I wanna know, but Special Olympics had a, annual Special Olympics, Harlem High School. Everybody from St. Vincent's got a whole bunch of places for the Special Olympics and Rockwell, I don't know. So, I wanna tell you, Kelly Dawson's got seventh place, and Kim Box has got fourth softball.
Well, well done. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak unrelated to annexation? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, item number twenty-nine, executive session. Could you please read this?
Pursuant to five ILCS one twenty-two C one, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Pursuant to five ILCS one twenty-two C two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Thank you. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So move.
A motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Burberry. Madam Kirk, would you please take the roll to enter into executive?
Brashaw?
Aye.
Keister?
Aye.
Burberry?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
McLanathan? Ross? Parker?
Aye.
And Busker?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.